The applicant to keep the property gravel for a time period. And then have that trigger a full site plan with you at a time in the future, we suggested five years. But yeah, there is no need for a time limit if you're going to require paving of the entire surface right now.
I think the recommendation and staff report indicated the removal of the razor wire, actually that's barbed wire, it's not razor wire. Is that what you intended to say in that staff report, Susan?
Yeah, I probably meant the barbed wire.
Okay, alright.
All the other lots around here that do the same thing all have that. And it's a security feature, I mean.
Is your intent to do the landscaping and maintain the chain link fence as well?
I've already upgraded the chain link fence and fixed it. I've already started some of the landscaping by removing the two trees that. Her name is Christine from the landscaping department said we're going to obstruct the right of way. I've put up a security lighting already. And the only thing I'm waiting on is to do the aprons and the landscaping. But you know, I kind of got the rug pulled out from underneath me, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
And there is no residential property anywhere near here, so the onsite lighting and the way it's directed isn't. I don't even know why that's on your condition.
Well, yeah, well, you do have Crown Point and Pickett Farms, but they're good ways to be, but they are. They like from your area would have an impact on any of those folks.
I have a question for staff, Susan. Your conditions are continue to be pertinent to this application, correct?
Uh, what do you mean?
In other words, you, your recommendation holds, you want a certain surface.
Correct. Think about when you, when you park your car in your driveway and all of the oil and everything that comes out of your car.
Oh, I'm with you on that one. I understand exactly.
Yeah, you've got cars that are sitting there for six months and it's a semi pervious surface. That stuff's going into the ground.
I do also have concrete slabs though that are able to have the vehicles sitting on there. And I can use these semi pervious or semi improved surface for equipment and other outdoor type storage.
By equipment, I'm sorry.
Right there.
Go on, Earl.
No ma'am, you go right ahead.
By equipment, by equipment, what do you mean?
Trailers or even for instance, just the fact that the city is going to be tearing up the entire side of my property on Rabie Road. I bet it'd be really helpful for them to have somewhere to put their cones and things that they're going to need to block this intersection every day during the day. Things like that.
I'm sure most, 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 most city contractors or those affiliated doing city work would have those types of things.
Well, maybe I'd give them a better deal.
Understood. Commissioners, any other questions, comment, criticism, suggestion?
This, this is Matt. I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on. So make sure Susan clearly states what we're voting on. Is it paved service with a two year or not paved service with, with a two year?
So our staff recommendation is written. It includes basically paved surface, probably site plan and two years. So if you want to remove something, that's your option.
Here's my, 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 my suggestion would be if, if, if we're going to have a parking lot, and that's what we're talking about here, then it needs to be finished like a parking lot. If we're in, and your staff is recommending that we pave the surface and finish like a parking lot. If we do that, then we need to remove the two year, you know, um, you know, requirement because obviously they're going to invest a lot of money to create us a parking lot storage. So we don't want to limit them to two years. Um, so either, either the two years have got to go or the pavement's got to go. From my perspective, if we're going to make a parking lot, we need to make a parking lot, do it correctly and, and, and take away the two year requirement and have them pave it and finish it off as a parking lot.
Not that, my goal was not to make a parking lot.
Understand, but that's what you're requesting right now.
No, I'm just requesting a storage facility, which is a by right ownership thing anyway. And I do also have concrete slabs, round or large ones, you know, on the site that I could put the automobiles on.
Okay, ma'am, I'm making my recommendation to the planning commission. Thank you.
I, I can't hear you.
I've got a question. I've got a question. So we've been talking, I've heard some discussion about the improvements that the city plans to make beyond Rabie. Susan, are you able to collaborate on that a little bit or, and just what are the intent, what's the intent of the city on those, you know, for what they plan to? To do there? Is that, is that strictly to beautify or do they, you know, do they help to have more traffic coming through or what's that all about?
Susan, are you there?
Yeah, um, you know, Jeremy, Chris, can you answer that question?
It's a stormwater management project. The stormwater department is, is, they're doing stormwater management improvements.
It's curb and gutter and tank is it sidewalk too or is it just curb and gutter?
No sidewalk, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I think it's just stormwater management.
No sidewalk.
Unfortunately, no sidewalk.
But that's a, that's gone through site plan review, so it should be in process.
Nikita?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at this site and I'm, I'm trying to get my head around what's unique about this application. And, and what, you know, planning is, is, is requesting that's different than anything else that we've asked applicants to do around our city. We, we, you know, I mean, we, we've, we've, you know, we've made a commitment to ask that, you know, certain sites or all sites for that matter. You know, come to comply with, with what we have as, as an ordinance and, 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 you know, just about every conversation that we have is about how costly it's going to be. And, and, you know, I've, I've, you know, always been an opponent of, uh, you know, just putting folks out of business, you know, because we, we need beautification. But if ever there's a need for, for a place to do improvement, I think this site needs the improvement. If, if, if the applicant's asking for, you know, limited use of the site, then, you know, I could, I could see where we're, we're only asking that the, the, you know, that improvements be made in areas that, that they're asking to park vehicles or park, you know, whatever. We've done that with other, other applicants before, but if, if they're asking for full use of the site, I'm, I'm not quite understanding why we would want anything less than what we've expected from other applicants.
Also, if I may add to that, Nikita, there, there just seems to be a semantic issue here, at least for me. Parking is, it's not a facility. A facility to me implies you have a built structure. This is an open to the element of surface on which cars will be parked. And that is part of our consideration for what we're really trying to do. And for what the use of the, of the property would dictate, which is, uh, and especially when now when you, when we're talking about, uh, uh, that their storm management is happening, that we do not have seepage into the ground of any vehicle or tool or whatever that's going to seep over time, oil, uh, uh, different and other fluids into the ground.
And that's exactly the direction that I was going with, with the city improvements. If, if, you know, the city has budgeted and is targeting this area to, to, you know, improve it and, and, you know, it'd be nice to hear that, that curbs are, are coming well, but if, if they're at least doing stormwater and gutter, then, you know, obviously, you know, we should expect no, nothing less from, from the landowners. That's just my thought.
Thank you both, Dr. Austin and Mr. Howkins. Are there any other questions or comment at this point? Hearing none, Susan?
Okay, so with all the conditions that we currently have, I'm going to read the motion. So the motion is to recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to all of the conditions contained in the draft ordinance. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Howkins?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck. We're going on to item number nine, Susan.
Hank, that is a request by Green Clean Car Wash for a conditional use permit to operate a car wash at thirty four oh one North Military Highway. The purpose of the request is to allow a car wash facility.
Alright, hello again, everybody. So this request for CUP comes from Green Clean Car Wash for the property located on the west side of North Military Highway, north of Lynn Street in the Sandy Heights neighborhood. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing car wash on the site and build a new one in its place. The site is zoned CC for community commercial, which allows car washes with a conditional use permit. The site is currently grandfathered, but because they plan to construct a brand new car wash, they will have to come into full compliance with the zoning ordinance by getting a conditional use permit. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the proposed site plan. Because this is a new development, it would have to go through the site plan review process. So that would ensure that it's fully compliant with all of the applicable zoning, landscaping, stormwater and resilience quotient requirements that the city has. There, they will be installing sidewalks along Military Highway and they plan to dedicate fourteen feet of right of way to widen Lynn Street to a standard road width. The applicant did contact the civic league, but staff never received any feedback regarding this proposal. Next slide, please. So these are the elevations, just so you can get an idea of what the car wash building will look like from the street. So given that the site will be brought into full compliance of the zoning ordinance through this development, staff is recommending that the conditional use permit request be approved, subject to the conditions in the draft report. I can stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Hank. Uh, one, thank you. I already answered one of my questions. We were concerned about sidewalk when we met mid-month. Sidewalk issues put to bed. They will be installing sidewalk.
Yes, on Military Highway, not on Lynn Street.
On, on the Military Highway portion of this. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Uh, Hank, is anyone here to speak in favor or against this application? The applicant with us, would he like to speak or she like to speak? Hearing none, Susan?
There, there are two applicants here. They may have, be having trouble.
Okay.
Greg or?
Yeah, yeah, this is Greg Schmidt with Kenley Horn with our office at forty five twenty five Main Street in Virginia Beach. We appreciate all y'all's time and, and looking through this. We do plan to provide, you know, significant improvements to the existing condition of the site. You know, adding some, some more landscaping, the, the sidewalk as mentioned, and really just bringing the site up to a more modern standard. With the resilience quotient, some of the other zoning requirements. Um, I believe with the, the dedication, we, we propose right now a reservation. I don't know that we specified a dedication on, on the plan. I don't know if that was in the condition or not. I, I don't recall seeing that on the document. But I believe, you know, the site, the site will operate with it either way, so unless our client has an issue with, with it being a true dedication, we could revisit that, but I believe everything works, works as proposed.
I thought I heard Susan read that that had been previously agreed to. Is that correct, Susan, with regard to the dedication?
Yeah, Hank, that was yours?
Yeah, that was my understanding from the transit, the transit department when this goes through site plan. That was my understanding of the, uh, but there's no condition specifically. It's just that it has to be developed to the, um, to the site plan that was provided. So I guess it'll still be the same end result of, you're not going to be developing onto that fourteen feet on Lynn Street.
Yes, sir. We will be reserving a full thirty foot width on Lynn Street. So that is the, the proposed condition.
Okay.
Thank you. So any other question or comment? Schmidt, commissioners, is anyone here against this application? Hearing none, Susan?
The motion is to recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to the conditions contained in the draft ordinance. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Howkins?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hale?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye, we make that recommendation to council. That's going to be a big improvement on what's there. We're doing already. Susan, before we get to the next one, anybody need a break at this point? Anybody want to take a five minute, uh, whatever break?
Could you order us some dinner, Earl?
Uh, I'll call somebody now. I don't know how quick they get to you.
I'm good, I'm good. I'm hanging in there.
Okay, Susan, I can answer.
We're moving now. Alright, number ten, Marketplace Soups and Salads for the following conditional use permits at one hundred Brook Avenue. A, a convenience store, B, the sale of alcohol beverages off premise, and C, the sale of smoking or vaping products. The purpose of these requests is to allow the operation of a convenience store with the sale of alcohol beverages for off premise consumption and the sale of smoking or vaping products.
Okay, so the subject property is located in the Tazwell Building in downtown. Uh, it's currently a restaurant known as the Granby Bistro. We recently found out that they were going to change the name to Marketplace Soup and Salad, but apparently the applicant has decided to keep it as Granby Bistro. But regardless, the proprietor now would like to convert the restaurant into a convenience store. And while functioning as a convenience store, it's our understanding that the owner intends to continue to sell much of the same food as they currently do, but only as, in a, in a to-go option. The applicants, also, the application also includes the sale of alcohol for off premise consumption and smoking products, but he will not be selling vaping products. Proposed hours are from seven AM to eleven PM, seven days a week. Uh, oh, thank you. Next slide, good. Uh, this is the zoning map and as you can see, the property is zoned DMU Downtown Mixed Use. Uh, to the north of the applicant's space are retail and restaurants, while to the south, east, west and across the street are various government facilities. Uh, the building does lie within one thousand feet of the Governor's School for the Arts. The applicant did hold a virtual public meeting on March twenty fourth. Uh, there were concerns expressed over yet another convenience store opening up in the downtown area versus a more needed, uh, commercial enterprise such as a grocery store. Ms. Van of the Downtown Civic League did share her concerns over duplication of goods currently offered by the MacArthur Pharmacy, which is just down the block. However, a convenience store does not necessarily conflict with the city's comprehensive plan, which describes, again, the downtown is a blend of residential and commercial uses that support a pedestrian oriented environment. Uh, next slide, please. Park, parking is not required in the DMU district, so that will not be a factor. Oh, well, we did quick, we did briefly saw an image of the building. Unfortunately, it disappeared on us, but, uh, landscaping, again, as typical with older commercial district, the building was built to the property line, so there's really little opportunity to improve landscaping. However, um, the applicant is proposing to take out, there it is, good deal, is proposing to take out the outdoor seating that's currently out in front, which will provide for a wider walking area. Uh, and therefore, as a, uh, if the council or, sorry, commission decides to approve, uh, uh, the CUP as a condition of approval, staff recommends that the applicant will be required to remove the outdoor seating. The Tazwell Building is a contributing structure of the downtown historic district, uh, which is a local designation, therefore signage or any other external changes will have to be reviewed by the architectural review board. Uh, staff recommends approval with the standard conditions, um, applying, uh, with two exceptions. One, no vaping products will be sold, and that is something the applicant has proposed themselves. And as I mentioned, that the outdoor seating shall be, uh, removed as the applicant has proposed. So that concludes my report. I am available for questions.
Sure, thank you. Uh, the no vaping, is that going to be in the, in the ordinance? It won't be smoking or vaping?
Yes, that's, that's, that no vaping will be part of the condition of approval.
And then removing the outdoor seating, that include the railings, I presume?
I would, I would say so, yes.
Well, let's say so one way or the other. I mean, if the idea was to improve the access to the sidewalk, it had to come down, wouldn't it?
It, it's written as outdoor seating area and I would include the railing as part of the outdoor seating area.
That's an encroachment, if that's there with an encroachment agreement, that's revocable at any time by the city, so, um, we can have it taken away.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murphy, I'm interested in your feedback, sir.
You've touched on my issues, Earl. Thanks.
Okay, other than that, you happy with this? Look, let me just go on record. You guys know I'm not a convenience store fan, okay? And, and the last thing I would want to see for us to have our downtown and undated convenience stores. We got a seven eleven on Monticello. We got another fast, I call it a seven eleven that I guess that's only in Bush. Maybe that's only in Duke. Uh, and there's another one right in the Freemasonry there, just on the other side of Bush. So I just, I, I think this is, is a good feature. My goodness, we got, uh, I was happy with, uh, Adele, when he, just the meals that he was serving, but I understand now this is going to be more a takeout facility and a self-serve type of uh, activity, which is in keeping with the spirit of the fast-moving vitality of downtown. I get it. But you, you know, I, I for one am going to be having a keen eye on where the next convenience store is in our downtown because we, we can easily, easily fall prey to allowing ourselves to be victimized by having an inundation of these things where we don't really want. But that's about fifteen cents worth and if you give me more time, I add another dime.
I have a, a question, Chairman Fraley.
Yes.
Do, and I don't, I've been to MacArthur Pharmacy many times, but I don't know the answer to this. Do we know, do they sell smoking and vaping products or, and/or?
I don't know.
They smell, they sell smoking for sure. I'm uncertain about vaping.
Thank you.
Any other comment at this time? Is the applicant, anyone who supported this application with us? Anyone against this application with us?
I think Mr. Sully Callahan, he was here. Is he still here?
I think we're having, I, I, somebody from the last one is, was typing in earlier that, that they could hear us, but they can't speak.
Yeah, Mr. Bremen, but he's not answering.
He was here and on mine, he was here and he started spinning and went away, so.
Sully Callahan is still here. He's got itself on mute.
It appears he has lost his connection.
Okay.
Okay, uh, uh, any further comment at this point, commissioners? Hearing none, Susan?
Okay, the, uh, motion is to recommend approval of the conditional use permits, subject to the conditions contained in the draft ordinance. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Howkins?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye, we'll make that recommendation to council. We're on to item number eleven.
Okay, this is Rite Aid Corporation for the following conditional use permits at five twenty five West twenty first Street. A, a drive-through facility, small scale, B, sale of alcohol beverages off premises, and C, sale of smoking or or vaping products. The purpose of these requests is to allow the addition of a commercial drive-through to an existing Rite Aid.
Alright, so as Susan said, this request comes from the existing Rite Aid, um, at five twenty five West twenty first Street between Manny Street and Colonial Avenue in Yount. The applicant is proposing to construct a single lane drive-through, uh, for the existing pharmacy on the property. The site is zoned CC for community commercial and it's located within the twenty first Street pedestrian commercial overlay, which does allow drive-through facilities with a conditional use. Uh, the site's currently grandfathered for certain uses like, uh, the sale of off, or the sale of alcohol beverages for off premises consumption as well as the sale of smoking products. But because they're proposing to add a new drive-through, they have to come into compliance by obtaining conditional use permits for all uses on the site. The applicant does not intend to sell vaping products and it's a condition of this permit that they will not be allowed to. Next slide, please. This is the, uh, proposed site plan. As part of this development, eight parking spaces are planned to be removed, uh, to help with vehicle situation on the site. Timmons Group did a site-specific parking study and showed that the reduction from forty-four to thirty-six parking spaces would not negatively affect the site. There would also be additional plantings, uh, in the parking lot to bring that lot closer to compliance with zoning ordinance. It's a performance standard for all pharmacies, uh, to have a generator in order for consumers to acquire prescription and non-prescription drugs during time of extended power outages. So the applicant currently has a equipment rental agreement with a company that's based in Pennsylvania to provide generators as needed. But one of our conditions for this conditional use permit is that if that agreement comes to an end, then a generator or other resilient power supply system will have to be installed permanently, so the site becomes fully compliant with zoning ordinance. So given that the, uh, improvements that will be made, uh, onsite and that all uses will now be conforming uh, to the zoning ordinance, staff is recommending that the conditional use permit requests be approved, subject to the conditions in the staff. I can stand by for questions.
So Hank, we, we encourage them to have a standby generator.
Yes, we require it.
We require them to have a standby generator. They got an arrangement with someone in Pennsylvania.
Correct.
Uh, which means that if they lose power, I mean, nobody anticipates the loss of power. It's not like they can call in advance and say, hey, we're losing power Thursday. Why wouldn't we require them to do that now?
Well, I, uh, I was, I was attempting to be flexible with our requirements, so since the requirement is not that it's installed on the property, it's that it's provided. That if they had an active agreement to provide generators, that, that I felt that that fulfilled the, kind of the spirit of the requirement. And then with the condition that if that, uh, agreement comes to an end, then they, then they install the, uh, generator permanently and become fully compliant that way.
May I make an observation? If you, if they have made an agreement, doesn't mean like they're renting a generator and it's there on the premises because they're, they could lose a great deal of money if they have to wait for something to come in from Pennsylvania because they have, there's a power outage.
I think this is something.
And the weather may, it doesn't. Pardon? I didn't hear you.
So I think this is a, a, a topic the applicant wants to discuss with you all, so it, it might be good to have their input.
Before, before we get to the applicant, you got any other questions, Mr. Morrison, commissioners? Great, uh, the applicant is here. The floor is yours, sir. I guess he's not with us.
He's, he's there.
They, I know that they really wanted to talk about this.
He was here.
I see as, uh, I see he is, uh,
Yeah, he's here.
He's on the telephone.
Do we have the option to unmute? Yes.
Um, who do I need to unmute? John Sazuski?
Yeah, John, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Sjedewski.
This is John Sazuski with Timmons Group.
There we go.
Business address, twenty-nine oh one South Lynnhaven Road, Virginia Beach. Roger Hoffman from Rite Aid is also on the call. Roger's the actual representative from Rite Aid that wanted to talk about the generator. So he is on the call right now, and he said he is trying, he's texting me as we speak, he's trying to unmute himself and chime in, so.
We may need to do that manually.
Yeah.
Did you hear me okay when I?
Hey, fine. So, show roll again, John.
So I'm a City Legend here, on the project, we put together the conceptual plan, we'll be submitting the, the site plan for the improvement. So anyhow, yeah, I, I was involved with Hank on the back and forth, and putting it together and providing the agreement. So I'm aware of the agreement that Rite Aid has in place for the, for the generator to be provided onsite. And yes, Hank, Hank did mention that as one of the conditions, they wanted to require that, I guess at the termination of the rental agreement, or if that rental agreement came to an end, that there'd be a permanent generator installed onsite. And your Rite Aid, I guess, just had a concern over being able to actually fulfill that requirement and install a permanent generator out there. Given that the site's already developed, not as it was ever planned for out of the gate, so.
Well, I hope you understand the position that I'm taking in, in this particular situation, if the idea is.
Hello, hello, hello?
Yes.
There he is. Roger. Roger here. Oh, sorry about that, I, you, I was off mute, but nobody could hear me.
Well, Roger, thanks for joining us, this is Earl Fraley, I'm the chairman of the commission. We're considering our application right now, and question arose with regard to whether or not you folks are willing to take some steps to ensure that this generator is more permanently installed as soon as possible.
Well, not at this time, that, that is not in, in our budget to, to install a generator at that store. Now, I did hear you speak, well, let me, let me qualify myself again. Roger Hoffman, Rite Aid Regional Construction Manager, thirty Hunter Lane, Camp Hill, Pennsylvania, one seven zero one one.
Thank you for that, Roger, I had overlooked it.
Yes, sir. So, so when I heard you speak about the generator coming from Pennsylvania, which is not accurate, we, we have contracts with a generator company, it happens to be Cleveland Brothers at this time, and they're all over the place, so we would not be pulling a generator if we need one from Pennsylvania. We would pull one from the local, most local facility they have. So, you know, I would say within a couple of hours, we could have a generator onsite and hooked up. It does not behoove us to be down with, with our business. We, we are very concerned with serving our customers and the community, and taking care of the folks down there if something should happen. But we are, we are Johnny on the spot, if you will, whenever it comes down to power outages due to natural disasters or, or man-made disasters, what have you. We, we are very quick, and a lot of times, we're, we're one of the first businesses to be back open for business in a disaster. So we, we, we take it to heart, and we're, we're very quick at reopening our stores if there's an issue with closure.
So again, just for clarity from my perspective, how local is local to you?
Uh, probably within two hours.
Two hours away?
Yeah, I'd say.
Okay, so that vendor for that generator is not in Hampton Roads?
I, I could say, I couldn't say whether it is or isn't now. It's not.
If it's two hours away, it can't be.
Well, no, no, two hours would not be. Now, I couldn't speak to where it would be positioned today. However, let me go one step further. If, if we see, let's say, a natural disaster impending, a hurricane incoming, a lot of times, we will pre-position generators and staff in certain areas, key areas, so we can serve, let's say, stores going down for business. So we, we, we could bring those in at times whenever we determine that there could be a potential issue in an area. So we've done that many times.
Understood. Any questions, Commissioners, comment?
Hey, Earl, this is Matt. I, I, this is not necessarily for the applicant, but I, I just get concerned if, I understand what the applicant's saying, they can have a generator, generator there in two hours. You know, we're trying to be a resilient city here for acquiring these generators and all the convenience stores going in and around. And if we allow an exception here to say, well, okay, well, you can bring one in within two hours, A, how do we enforce that? And then B, how do we hold everyone else to that same standard going forward? And if we did do that, and, and so everyone that can bring them in, I would guarantee you we have a natural disaster, we're not going to have any of our stores have generators going there, because everyone's trying to rush one in here, so I just, I get uncomfortable making an exception. I understand the applicant's position, but I get uncomfortable making an exception, because that's going to become the rule, and the whole idea of having a resilient city and generators in our stores will go away, because everyone will say it'll happen within two hours, and we have no way of guaranteeing that or, or proving that's going to work once you have that disaster. So that's a comment, not necessarily a question.
Thank you, Matt, appreciate that input. Any other, uh, the representatives from Rite Aid, you folks have anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Well, the only other thing I would add is that, that look, if there's a natural disaster, I mean, a lot of things depend on, on being able to get, to get to the location. So, I mean, generally speaking, like I say, we, if we see something incoming and we pay attention to that stuff, we can, we pre-position generators and, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question or comment? Susan?
Okay, so the motion is to recommend, recommend approval of the conditional use permits subject to the conditions currently contained in the draft ordinance. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley.
Aye, we'll make that recommendation to council, good luck, thanks for you folks for chiming in. We're on to item twelve.
The next item is the Fish and Pig for the following conditional use permits at one fifteen West Twenty-Fourth Street. A, a restaurant with extended hours of operation, and B, live entertainment. The purpose of these requests is to allow the restaurant to operate with live entertainment until two o'clock AM.
Thank you, Susan. Like she said, the application is for a restaurant called the Fish and Pig. And again, like she said, they would like to be able to have live entertainment and be open past eleven PM, which requires a conditional use permit. Next slide, please. The property is located in the Park Place neighborhood. They are zoned IL, light industrial, and as, as are the surrounding properties. While still an industrial-oriented neighborhood, it is in transition with many of the old industrial buildings being repurposed for residential or commercial, like the Fish and Pig itself, and the peanut factory flat, flats across the street. Sorry, I can't say that fast, three, three times. The building where the Fish and Pig will, will be, was built in nineteen thirteen. I'm sorry, next slide, please. There, there you see a before and after photo. The proposed use is consistent with the CECL Plan, which encourages the repurposing of underutilized industrial spaces and in and near the Park Place neighborhood to commercial, office, residential. Next slide, please. The proposed hours of operation are from eleven AM to two AM, seven days a week, and the entertainment will consist of live band, karaoke, comedian, acts, and poetry reading. Next slide. The Park Place Civic League did send an email of support for this application. And here we see a floor plan of the Fish and Pig. Next slide, please. Fish and Pig will be required to accommodate twenty off-street parking spaces, which are being, will be constructed a block down north of the building, which the ordinance does allow, since the building is a contributing structure of both the Park Place and the Norfolk Western Railway State Historic District. There is some wiggle room for, for parking in, in cases like that. The property is not located within one thousand feet of a Norfolk Public School. Staff recommends approval for the application with standard conditions, and that concludes my report.
If they're going to be using, thanks, Joy, appreciate it. If they're going to be using that vacant site for parking, shouldn't we be stipulating that that site be improved with art surface, improved surface?
It, it, it will be, it will be. They need to get the conditional use permit first. They, I understand, and maybe Hank can chime in on this. I understand it has gone through site plan approval, or it's pending site plan approval, don't quite remember.
I, I think it's going through the site plan review right now.
Okay, but they, it's my understanding that they can't improve that, that parking area until they get the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Now, I heard you say, thanks for making a mention of the fact that the Park Place Civic League is in favor. There are a lot of businesses around, in and around there, have you gotten any feedback from any of those businesses?
I, I have not, no, but they're very similar to, to what's going on for, what's going on at the, the Fish and Pig.
Okay, we did notify all of those businesses, I think I did see that in the report.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Well, every, every property owner, I should say.
Property owner, that's, that's good, I'm happy. Questions, Commissioners?
Just to comment that future applications in this area should be, should reach out to the Railroad District's Business Association. As an active member, I doubt that they would have any issues with this application, but it should be looked in.
And, and I apologize, Kevin, I did reach out to John Porter to ask them, to ask him if, if this application had been to them, and I did share a bit of information, but yes, absolutely, we will.
Thank you for that, Susan. This is a part, this site is a part of the overlay for historic railway, I forget what we call it.
Uh, it's Norfolk and Western Rail, Rail, Hail Ray, State Historic District. I apologize. Tripping over my tongue today.
Okay, now I was just wondering with that, within that district or whether it was on the perimeter, but you got me, I appreciate it. Any other questions at this point, Commissioners? Okay, then, the applicant or anyone in favor of this application here with us?
Uh, yeah, my, this is Tom Fox.
Yes, sir, Mr. Fox.
Hi, I live at five four zero nine Silbert Road, Norfolk, two three five oh nine. And I'm the business owner for the Fish and Pig, and I'm here to take any questions, and I appreciate everybody's help.
How'd you come up with the name Fish and Pig?
It's actually a franchise.
Oh, really? I was not aware of that.
Yeah, there's the, there's one in Farmville, and there's one in Waynesboro.
No kidding? Okay, so you'll be the first one here in Hampton Roads, I presume?
Correct.
Indeed. Indeed. Any other questions, Commissioners? Is anyone here against this application? Hearing none, Susan?
The motion is to recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to the conditions contained in the draft ordinance. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton? Mr. Hales?
Aye. Aye.
And Mr. Fraley.
Aye, we'll make that recommendation to council, Mr. Fox, thank you for your time. We'll move on to item thirteen.
Item thirteen, number one space for a conditional use permit to operate with live entertainment at eight eighty North Military Highway. The purpose of this request is to allow the art gallery to have live entertainment.
Sorry, I had to unmute there. So this request comes from the number one space located in Suite eleven sixty-three A inside of the Military Circle Mall. The applicant is creating a arts education center and a theater, to which the applicant wishes to have other forms of live entertainment as an accessory use. Next slide, please. There we go. So this site is zoned CR for regional commercial, which allows theaters and art galleries by right. But they must get a conditional use permit, because they are adding additional forms of live entertainment that aren't usually associated with the standard dramatic and dance and musical performances that go along with the theater. So that's why they're getting a conditional use permit for live entertainment. Next slide, please. The applicant, I think that the applicant will talk to you about potentially changing these, but right now, the applicant proposes to operate from ten AM until nine PM, Monday through Saturday, and, and twelve PM until six PM on Sunday, which are the same hours as the Military Circle Mall. The space has one hundred and forty-two seats indoors, no seats outdoors, and with a total capacity of one hundred and sixty-eight people. And for entertainment, and remember, this, this is the entertainment that's on top of the standard theater and art gallery types of entertainment. So they're proposing to have open mics, video productions, live bands, podcasts, different classes and workshops, and then visual art exhibitions. Next, please. And this is a map of the location within the mall. It's located near the movie theater as well as food court, and there are sufficient facilities for patrons in the space as well as within the mall. So it's that red rectangle is the space that they'll be operating. They're actually are operating in currently. Next slide, please. And here's the floor plan, just to get an idea of what it looks like. So given that the proposal is consistent with adopted plans, and live entertainment is compatible with an arts center and theater use, staff recommends that the conditional use permit request be approved subject to the conditions within staff.
Thank you, Hank. Any questions of Mr. Morrison, Commissioners? Hank, on the live entertainment and the entertainment end, I presume they're going to be selling tickets to some of these events, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and how is that going to be handled? Is that going to be sales at the door, advanced ticket sales, how, how are they proposing to cover that?
Um, I, that might be a better question for the applicant, I'm not entirely sure. I think there's probably a box office within that little entryway, where it's the, between the seats and the, and the mall. But yes, they're planning on collecting a, a fee for, for certain events.
We, I'm, I am here, if I may interject, this is Michael Lamell.
Mr. Lamell, if you'd hold tight just a minute, sir, we'll be right with you.
Oh, all right, yes, sir.
Just sit still for a moment, we'll be right with you. Any other, any other questions of Commissioners, any question, more question, Commissioners, or Hank? Mr. Lamell, you're on, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Fraley. Greetings, everyone. The, to address your question about tickets, we will be taking them at the door. We've never done any pre-advanced online ticket sales or anything like that. So no, no advance, tickets will be as on a walk-up situation.
Okay, dope. And live entertainment, can you give us a flavor for what you might be looking at in the way of that entertainment?
Yes, yes, sir. For plays, theater productions, we did a, a production of The Amen Corner with the late Leslie Rainey, who's been a great fixture in the community for a while. who's been a great fixture in the community for a while, a friend of mine. We did The Amen Corner. We did small things that, kind of rehearsals, to see what can actually work in the space. Once we got this floor plan together, we haven't done anything, any productions, but we're gonna marry our stage and theater productions to what the floor plan that you all have regulated us to.
Thank you for that, so any questions on Mr. Lemelle?
Mr. Chair, we need his mailing address.
Oh, thank you, Matt. Mr. Lemelle, if you could give us your name and mailing address for the record, sir.
Yes, Michael Lemelle, that's L-E-M-E-L-L-E. The email address is thelemellgroup, T-H-E-L-E-M-E-L-L-E group at gmail dot com. And the mailing address is 2650 Middle Avenue, Norfolk 23504.
Thanks, Matt, thank you, Mr. Lemelle. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Fraley, if I could, Mr. Lemelle, this is Kathy Shelton. I'm not sure if you can see me. Are you, are you going to produce all of the shows? Or are you amenable to working with like other community groups or youth groups in production of shows?
Would love to work with other community groups. This is a community grassroots place. However, I was informed at the first hearing that we had to produce everything in here.
Okay.
And I would work in conjunction to produce a theater. For example, we have in our prayer city Teens With A Purpose.
That's what I was asking about, yes.
Before, and I know a lot of those kids, Deirdre Love actually worked for me before. So we could work together to produce something for the children, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely that, yes.
Thank you.
Kathy, the limitation is on promotions.
Right.
I want to make sure that the facility operator is the promoter so that they know
Right.
what their space can handle and what's coming out to the public. So productions, they can come and go, or team up how they see fit. But as long as Mr. Lemelle is involved with the promotional aspect, then they're in compliance.
Yes.
Excellent. I just know there's a need in the community for something like that. So several community groups have asked about that, so thank you.
I look forward to you coming down, Ms. Shelton, and seeing the facility once we're able to work.
I'd be, I'll be there, as the commission knows, I go to all places.
Love you.
I would like to ask a question just for clarification. And I want to say, it's really exciting to hear that you're doing this, and I'm happy that you found a space for it, because it's really vital.
Yes, ma'am.
Question?
Yes.
In relationship to where you are, you're talking about the same door you would enter as you go to the theater on the right. You're talking about spaces to the left of that. There is kind of an open space to the left as you enter the door? Is that what you're talking about?
So ma'am, we're talking, we are currently at the food court entrance. It's the closest entrance to us. And all of the food court spaces are there. The last one is the Japanese restaurant, and we are very, we're immediately next door to that, on the way to, leaving the food court going towards the movie theater.
Got you, that's exactly what I visualize.
Right.
What do you, what do you, how big are you thinking in terms of seating there?
We're currently able to, with our floor plan, to seat 168. But of course, for community theater, like I've done shows at the Little Theater of Norfolk, and everywhere, there can be 25 people, it can be 100 people. It's community theater. So, yeah, we hope to fill it up, but we're just starting.
Okay, well, thank you, I was just interested in what your plan was, thank you.
That's right, absolutely, thank you.
Appreciate that clarification from you, Adam, and thanks for that key question there, Dr. Austin. Mr. Lemelle, you've mentioned Leslie Rainey, he was a mentor of mine. I've known him since my infancy, and he's a dear friend as well. I've spoken, several commissioners have spoken to the importance of having a facility like this to at least be able to engage some young people. You certainly won't get a hold of them, but this is another positive avenue, hopefully for maybe enticing some young people to try another avenue for their skills and abilities, so.
Yes, sir.
And don't mess up, because Ms. Shelton is gonna come and give me some feedback.
I'm gonna put her in a show.
Questions, comments, commissioners?
I just had one more, I think it was mentioned that the applicant may want, had to change some of the hours or something. Did I hear that incorrectly? I don't know if maybe that's not the case.
I was gonna point that out.
Okay, thank you.
So it's in regard to our time. When we did the Amen Corner and a couple of other small productions that we tried to put on, we've been kind of working it out to see what works and what doesn't. The mall management so graciously worked with us so that we were able to keep a little bit after the mall closed. So we worked out that we could use the public restrooms in the food court area. The security worked with us, we had the local beat cops that were here working with us. Everything was very much awesome. We had small audiences, but it worked out great, the logistics of it. And if a show starts at, a typical show, theater show starts at eight o'clock, some start at seven. In either case, we'd be right at the nine o'clock hour when the mall closes for exiting or for a intermission or what have you. So they allowed us to go to 10:00, 10:30, depending on what the event was, the performance was. And we never really stayed past that. And we were able to exit through the food court, which is already the common area of the mall and the security, for the mall would escort the, would open the door and let the people out. And other local, the local cops that patrolled here, they would also help. So we made relationships to help that out. And everyone has just been very wonderful on that regard, because it's theater. So that was regarding extended hours. Why I was questioning, or asking, could we still kind of do that? Or have that grace, or how does that work?
So it's up to you guys to, if you want to, we can change those hours. I think Adam can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can change those. We can, you guys can vote to approve or deny with these updated hours as part of that.
And the hours you had in your staff report, what, Hank?
The hours are 10:00 AM till 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then 12:00 PM until 6:00 PM on Sunday.
Which are all regular hours.
Right.
Okay.
You know, I can visualize that you're going to have productions that are going to be longer, and you would need to have the flexibility to stay in there in order to accommodate it.
Yes, ma'am, again, the mall, the former mall management was very gracious. I mean, they allowed us to build the sets. We were in here 11:00, 12:00 o'clock. Again, the local police, which we've made relationships with them, already had some from former work. And the staff here, and you know, we were in here working and doing production until that. But plays and performances, we were done always before 11:00, well before that, even like 10:00 o'clock.
Adam, Malita, are we obligated to stipulate in this ordinance a definitive timeframe for these performances?
You're not required to. It's customary to put hours of operation on conditional use permits so that we know when the activity starts and ends. The nature of these uses is that they generally, if they're not managed, could have negative externalities, so it's customary to do it, but it's not required.
What, excuse me, what hours are practical? I'm asking the applicant.
Mr. Lemelle?
Yes, so I was saying 10:00 to 10:00, 10:00 or 10:30, because we're exiting between 9:00 and 9:30, then we're exiting, everyone is out by 10:00. You know, the play.
Put 11:00 o'clock in there, and I'm gonna be comfortable with it. I don't want to speak for everyone, but let's put something that's practical.
11:00 is great, yes, that would be a conventional theater time. To, you know, when everybody's closing up the building at 11:00, like the addicts.
You're going to be, I actually think it's very propitious that you are anchoring that area, and you're gonna want that flexibility, because things will develop. I mean, you've been in it, you know that, things will develop over time.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And understand, Mr. Lemelle, if we go to 11:00, it still can, and come with you to make those arrangements through the mall management, make sure.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
What have you, I mean, us giving you the flexibility is one thing, but they're not willing to accommodate that, then I'm not sure what you might have.
So they, yeah, they already are. They already have said that you can contact them if you all needed to as well. So they are already on board because they're anticipating the traffic and the generate, the traffic that we can generate with the arms.
Is there any unreadiness amongst the commissioners as we go forward to consider this application time-wise of operation? 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Sunday? Is any unreadiness with regard to that?
No.
So noted. Susan, we can, I'm sorry, Hank, we can have that in the motion as well?
So the hours are from?
10:00 AM till 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Sunday?
I'm sorry, you got cut off, Hank.
All right, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM Sunday.
Okay, so the most would be to recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to the conditions contained in the draft ordinance with the modification of hours of operation being from 10:00 to 11:00, Monday through Saturday, and noon to 11:00 on, 11:00 PM on Sunday. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
I will make that recommendation to counsel, good luck with that, Mr. Lemelle.
Thank you, I look forward to seeing you all to come and visit.
Okay, the last, 14, 15, 16, 17. Again, I think Paula's gonna do one presentation, so I'll read them all as one, but do separate motions. So City of Norfolk to vacate portions of the right-of-way of Posey Lane between the Transit Center and French Church Street, containing 10,261 square feet or 0.36 acres, more or less. The purpose of the request is to facilitate the redevelopment of the road network in support of the St. Paul's Choice Neighborhood Initiative. 15, Choice, City of Norfolk to vacate portions of the right-of-way of French Church Street between Wood Street and the proposed extension of Freemason Street, containing 40,642 square feet or 0.933 acres, more or less. City of Norfolk to vacate portions of the right-of-way of Charlotte Street between French Church Street and Chapel Street, containing 20,449 square feet or 0.469 acres, more or less. City of Norfolk to vacate portions of the right-of-way of Chapel Street between Mariner Street and Holt Street, containing 10,326 square feet or 0.237 acres, more or less. And again, as I mentioned in the first one, the purpose of these requests are to facilitate the redevelopment of the road network in support of St. Paul's Choice Neighborhood Initiative.
Ms. Shay?
Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. We passed from afternoon to evening altogether with no meals, sorry. I've been eating with my camera off, so. What you have before you is a step towards realizing the St. Paul's Choice Neighborhood Initiative plan. It's a proposal to vacate four portions of right-of-way in the area. Posey Lane, French Church, Charlotte and Chapel Streets, just portions of them that will facilitate the development of a new street network, Phase One street network. And you'll recall that in all our work in the St. Paul's area, one of the huge issues out there was the lack of connectivity of this area to surrounding areas, but also internally. So the real goal of the transportation plan as it moves forward is to create a grid in this area. And that includes realigning Church Street and much more of a north-south axis so that it will go from the Wood Street intersection straight down to St. Mary's Steeple and really give that vista and that address that we've been seeking. And it'll also facilitate extending Freemason Street across St. Paul's Boulevard to the east to this area. So if you go to the next slide.
Hopefully, if these three don't take as long as.
You can, you can kind of see the new road network on the right in the darker black outline. You can see that's the beginning of creating this new network. And in order to do this and provide all new utilities for the area, we need to do Phase One of vacating these four portions of right-of-way. So that is what we had, and as I mentioned, utilities would all be relocated to these new rights-of-way as part of this.
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Paula? I just got a dumb question here. We're gonna reconfigure the street scape in St. Paul's. One of my pet peeves when we do that is are we gonna put the existing above-ground utilities underground?
Absolutely, that is part of this, yes.
Okay.
I know that that was one of the goals of the earlier St. Paul's efforts, was to get utilities underground, so yes, that's a part of this. So with the condition that the utilities are relocated and the roads remain usable until the new roads are built, we would recommend approval.
Thank you, Paula, any question, commissioners? Anyone here for this application? Anyone here against this application? Paula, Susan, I'm sorry.
Someone. The motion, and we'll do all for these separate. The motion is to recommend approval to vacate portions of the right-of-way of Posey Lane. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Mr. Houghtons?
I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye. Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, the motion is to recommend approval to vacate portion of the right-of-way of French Church Street. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
The motion is to recommend approval to vacate portions of the right-of-way of Charlotte Street. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
And the last one on our public hearing agenda. The motion is to recommend approval to vacate portions of the right-of-way of Chapel Street. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Thank you, commissioners, we're in the new business.
Okay, the first one is to initiate a zoning text amendment to allow health and fitness facility by conditional use permit in the HC-WF1 district.
I think Susan pretty well explained what it is, to allow the use in the district by conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, okay. Any questions, commissioners? Hello, Kevin, you want to speak to that at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so the motion is to initiate the zoning text amendment. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Amanda?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
The next one is to initiate an amendment to modify Plan Norfolk's 2030 Appendix B, a green infrastructure. Appendix B, uh, a green infrastructure plan for Norfolk, and Tristan is here for this one.
Uh, good evening. I'll make it quick because I know you, y'all are hungry. Um, as I mentioned in the mid-month meeting, uh, this amendment to the green infrastructure plan is to tie up loose ends, um, in order for the city to receive points for CRS credit for our class modification that we're applying for in August.
Okay, okay, so any question, commissioners? Susan?
The motion is to initiate the, uh, amendment to modify, um, the, uh, Plan Norfolk twenty thirty. Uh, Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
And then the last initiation, uh, is, uh, to initiate various text amendments to the zoning ordinance to modify development standards and performance standards. And to adjust
I.
Or anti-for uses that would only be available during the current pandemic emergency declared by the governor.
I, I think I can jump on this one. And again, this one's a little open-ended, so we don't necessarily have all the details. Um, but it's, um, essentially as it reads, just to look and see if there's any ways that we can improve um, business operations where we can during the pandemic. Um, not quite sure what that means yet, so we're still trying to figure that out. We're doing some research on it.
Nothing else that makes us look ahead and start at the next pandemic that comes along, maybe we even better prepare.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But we will be seeing this again nonetheless.
Absolutely, because like I said, we haven't really, we haven't done too much with it yet. So, and Susan, there was a fourth initiation after this one.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Um, so the motion is to initiate the various text amendments. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
All right, our last initiation, initiate a zoning text amendment to create a use and set of performance standards for casino uh, and to create appropriate permissions for the use in the downtown-based zoning districts and to amend performance standards and permissions for commercial recreation center and amusement or gaming device.
Not sure I really have to explain much on this one, uh, but right now we don't have a use, so we need to create a use. And then we're leaving in the, um, commercial recreation and, and center and amusement or gaming device just in case we need to tweak those on the other side. So you create a casino, you're carving it out of those and, and somewhere or another. And we haven't drafted much on this yet, so.
And you'll be keeping this posted, so we're looking forward to that.
Of course.
Any question, commissioners?
Yeah, um, Chief, Rich, Chair, I have a, I have one question, five parts, so it'll take about twenty minutes, is that okay? No, I got, I got nothing.
Hey, send them an email, Matt.
Hey, Paula, can you mute Matt?
Say again, Joe.
I'm good on that, yeah.
I said, Paula, just go ahead and mute Matt right now.
I'm good, let's go.
All right, uh, so the motion is to initiate the zoning text amendments. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
All right, that concludes the public hearing, and I'm gonna hand it over to Susan McBride now for the Architecture Review Board.
Thank you.
Now, Sophia Latz is gonna take this one.
Aye.
Hello, good evening, commissioners. Um, we have three items on the agenda. Um, let's see, the first one being East Water Street's Brownfields Improvement Project. Um, let's see, can I share, or is this, we have um, as far as a presentation goes, let's see.
Cherry, can you hand over the?
Sophia, you should be able to, um.
Oh, just drag it myself?
Share your screen, yes.
Yes, yes, I do want to be on the presenter. There we go. Hey. Share content.
Okay.
Okay, we can all see this. So, uh, the East Water Street Brownfields, uh, improvement project is initiated by the op, uh, City of Norfolk's Office of Resilience. Um, they received the Virginia Brownfields Restoration and Economic Redevelopment Assistant Fund as well as the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Brownfield Site Remediation Grant. Um, the ERT, so what they're planning on doing is, is, uh, as you can see in this rendering, um, they will be removing extent gravel and stone and, uh, landscaping, of which there is not any. Um, and they will be installing, uh, landforms and meadows, repaving the ERT, which runs alongside um, this, this lot. Uh, they are retaining a concrete pad uh, that is currently on site as a multifunctional, multi-use plaza. Uh, they will be, they, we're, there will be a crushed gravel. Um, uh, walkway leading from the ERT to the shoreline, and there will also be a crushed stone, um, food court or vehicular sort of pad. Um, let's see, you can see the planting, uh, plan here. Um, it's all going to be native grasses and shrubbery and trees. Um, and the ARB, uh, by vote of nine to zero, recommended approval of the application noting, uh, the nice landscaping.
Okay, um, Mr. Murphy, any, any nuances you wish to share about this particular item?
Uh, I would say that acknowledging the active use of skateboarding as a good thing, um, which is what's going on now in the area is, um, uh, excuse me. Excuse me. Uh, is, is a great part of the plan, and that, um, this is really gonna enhance the experience, uh, between City Hall and, uh, Harbor Park.
Yeah, I'm just gonna amen that, Kevin. I was gonna ask Sophia if that little, uh, concrete pad that is currently being used as a skateboard park is gonna be a part of this. And if you walk Elizabeth River Trail, when you get past the Berkeley Bridge, this is what you're into, and it's not the most pleasant thing to walk upon.
No, sir. But they are retaining that pad as, as a multifunctional plaza of sorts.
Yeah, so that adds to, that, that's beautiful, I think. In my mind at least, having just walked the, the Elizabeth River Trail during the pandemic. Um, that would be a significant improvement, and it also would be a heck of a nice transition from, uh, from the City Hall area and up around, uh, just before you get to the Berkeley Bridge, down to Harbor Park, would really enhance that quite a bit. Really enhance it. Any other comment, commissioners?
Yeah, um, the difference between, please comment upon the difference between the crushed stone walkway and the crushed stone vehicle court.
So they are two separate, um, areas. So the crushed stone vehicle court, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse on here. Um, so that is located right here, and I believe that the crushed stone pa- uh, pathway extends from the ERT, which is going to be repaved in asphalt down along to shoreline and runs along the shoreline and connects to that vehicle, um, that vehicle pad. Uh, there will be two concrete, uh, pathways um, for, for vehicles to get onto this crushed stone pad.
Uh, and they're there, uh, during certain hours to service the people who are walking by?
Um, that, I believe, I, uh, is a better question for the, um, for the applicant, and I thought I saw them on the list. Um, I'm not entirely, I, I do not know the hours of this.
Let me ask a question while we, uh, got a slight pause. But, uh, at least twice in today's hearing, we had a discussion either with an applicant or an application regarding, uh, finished surfaces, hard surfaces. Uh, and now it looks like we're going with a crush and run, a crushed stone for vehicular traffic. Aren't we not being a little bit hypocritical there? If we're expecting others who are utilize, utilizing lots and spaces to pave them with a improved hard surface. I just asked a general question. Help me out with that a little bit, Adam. I don't, I don't want to be guilty of us building things for ourselves, so to speak, and using whatever latitudes we so desire. And applicants holding them to a, a stricter, uh, means of operation. Am I being a little bit over there?
Uh, it's a good question. Um, I, I think that this is a special project. Um, and what's acceptable here might not be acceptable elsewhere because of the um, conditions, um, the issues with, um, stormwater and drainage and flooding um, in this, uh, area. Um, so i- i- it, uh, if it were right across the street, I, I'd say it's a very pertinent question. Um, comparing a flood-prone area like this to a high and dry area like uh, proximate to military highway, I, I think you're dealing with a different um, problem, and it might dictate a different solution. But what the actual analysis was for this site, I don't know. Um, and either the applicant might know.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, guys. Uh, this is Jason Rivald. I'm the designer at Stromberg, Garrigan and Associates. Um, just to clarify, the vehicular application, it's crushed stone on the surface, and then, uh, it has a organic binder uh, that changes kind of the stone, like maybe think of it as a Rice Krispie treat, so it can still permeate through there. So it's more of a engineered stone gravel product. It's not, uh, it's not just like gravel on a, on a typical surface.
So if Jason is not.
Twelve inches deep.
Okay, so it's not gonna be loose gravel acted by rain and vehicles?
No, it's, it's not the same as that.
Okay, so it's gonna be a hard-packed crushed stone?
Correct.
Kind of, uh, serves as a hard surface, but it is permeable?
Yeah, it's, it's actually ADA accessible too, so.
So I would, uh, Earl, to ask the question directly, is it in conflict with what we voted on under the continued agenda item?
And that, that was my thinking. I thought it was.
And Jeremy's probably the best person to answer that, if not Adam.
And so I will, I will say a couple of things. One, the application for this one, the, the proposal we talked about today is not on the role, it's not on the books. So, I mean, from a standpoint of that, this application is incomplete, so it's they're going through site plan right now, so they can kind of operate the existing rules. So there's no, like, legal conflict in that sense. Um, I think, and I don't know this for certain, but I think, and, and as the, um, as Mr. Rival was saying, the, um, the surface may actually qualify as the per, as pervious pavement through the, um, pervious exception to the rule, because there is, and there is the current and the proposed regulations an exception where pervious pavements can be used that aren't necessarily hard paved surfaces. I don't know this for certain. I haven't reviewed the site plan on this one to that level of detail, but I think it might actually get you there. So I think that would also take us away from looking at, um, being hypocritical, because I think they're actually meeting the rule.
Okay, uh, yeah, I was just wanting to make sure that we are in a position to be able to say that the surface that ended up there to handle vehicles is in compliance with the guidelines that we were trying to stipulate in the, uh, application and, uh, uh, continued agenda. You telling me that we're safe and I'm not objecting, I feel safe.
Correct.
Okay, uh, commissioners, any further question on that?
No, I, well, I would, I think we just need to be sure that we're not looking at the same problem of, uh, of, of, of oil and fluids and whatnot.
Well, I think, I think that what they, I think I heard, uh, Mona was that we should be covered with regard to the guidelines that we're seeking to put in place.
Okay. Okey doke.
Yes, sir, I believe that is the case.
Any other question or comment, commissioners? Are you gonna call for the votes, Sophia? You can get Susan back to do that.
Cut him?
No, that's you. I said, you are Susan now. Go right ahead.
Yes. Okay, so the, let's see, the next one.
Done, the motion is.
Uh, the motion, sorry, the motion, yes.
Yeah, we need to vote on this one.
Um, is to approve the application as presented.
Do you want me to call names?
I, I think you probably better for the record, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Austin?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Item number B. Oh, yeah, item B.
So that's, um, going to be Building One, uh, of the rail yard at Lambert's Point Development. It is at twelve hundred West Twenty-Sixth Street at the corner of Hampton Boulevard. So that is a, um, it's Zone CC. It is a shell build, meaning that the tenant has been, is unconfirmed at the moment. Um, and there will be a tenant build out in the second phase. It is, uh, faced in brick, um, two different tones of brick. There are blind windows that will be, uh, faced in a darker brick. Uh, the roof is TPO, um, and the rooftop mechanicals, uh, is screened in corrugated metal. There is a, um, a patio that extends along the Hampton-facing facade uh, that extends to an eight-foot-wide multi-use sidewalk. Um, that patio is covered by a steel canopy. Um, there's a better idea of, um, of the plan here and the elevations. Uh, the signage is representative of location. It is not proposed, but it will be painted. Uh, this application also has, uh, let's see, what are the lights? The lights are three and a half inch integrated LED cylinders that are mounted, um, to the, along the perimeter of the building. Um, I believe this application also presents, uh, or proposes around thirty new parking spaces um, and a refuge, uh, enclosure that, um, and this corner over here, uh, that is built of CMU and faced with matching brick and, uh, is shut with vinyl gates. You can see here. And, um, at this time, uh, one of our members had left to go to another meeting, so our vote is, was eight to zero. Um, and, uh, they recommended approval of the new construction, um, building materials, landscaping and hardscape as presented.
Kevin, as a ARB rep, anything you want to share with us?
Um, I was not the member who left early.
And you got nothing additional to share, huh? Okay. Commissioners, any question? Sophia?
Yes, sir. So their recommendation is to approve the application as submitted for the new construction building, its materials, landscaping and hardscape.
Uh, Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Houghtons?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Item C.
That would be, uh, two, uh, two four zero six Colonial Avenue, which is toast. It's at the corner of West Twenty-Fourth Street and Colonial Avenue. It is a two-story brick vernacular commercial structure, um, Zone CC. Uh, they are looking to install a blade sign uh, along the corner. Um, it is, let's see, the letters are individually, um, and direct mounted. They are internally illuminated LED with a black aluminum return, and they're attached to fabricated aluminum cabinets. Um, a cabinet painted black. Uh, it is thirty inches wide by eleven, by one hundred ten inches tall and sixteen inches deep. Um, it will cover, uh, a part, a part of the sign band that is currently, um, extended upon the building. And then due to signage requirements, fresh baked loaves will be painted over.
Any question, officers? Any question, Commissioners? So. Kevin, anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Sophia?
Yes, sir, uh, the ARB recommended approval of the sign and encouragement as presented.
Ms. Austin.
Yes.
Mr. Houchens.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Ms. Shelton.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley.
Aye. That concludes our agenda. Before we get going, folks, let me take a moment just to say thank you to all of you. I know this has been a challenge of our measure, and, uh, from my perspective, you guys have more than met the challenge, you've overcome the challenge. So thank you all, staff and Commissioners, for, for your time. One last thing I want to say, Ms. Austin, I didn't send you that, uh, newspaper to make you read it, I thought maybe you might find it interesting.
It was exceedingly interesting.
And, uh, that, that will be a test next month, so make sure you're up to speed.
Well, it deserves discussion, but not today.
But I, it, it's something I ran across, and I wanted to share with you guys, and I thought you might find it interestingly. Uh, and I don't think I have anything else. Any comments from any of you Commissioners?
I have one thing, Chairman Fraley. I think we need to, uh, wish our newest Commissioner a very happy birthday, it was Amanda's birthday.
Oh.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you, guys, thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, congratulations.
We're going to do a drive-by parade. This is your, this is your drive-by parade, Amanda.
Many happy returns to you, Amanda, and thank you for your perseverance here today, really. Uh, I know a lot of people on their birthday would have found something else to do, but. Many happy returns to you, and thank you for sticking in here with us.
Thank you.
Mr. Leader, you have anything for us, sir?
Uh, just be careful on your way home.
Mr. Homewood, anything you'd like to say, sir?
Um, yes, yes, sir, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, you know, five hours in, I'm going to keep it real short. Um, two things, one, um, the item two that was, um, um, wa- was misrepresented as being withdrawn, it has not been withdrawn. It is being continued. Um, it, it will be on your agenda almost certainly, um, in July. So, um, if, if you feel, Mr. Chair, that, that you all need to re-vote that, um, so that it, you know, that you're voting on a continuance as opposed to a withdrawal, um, that, that, that is your call, sir.
Uh, by leaving it as it is, does that limit your flexibility staff-wise?
Um, I, I mean, it's probably six of one, half dozen the other, but, you know, we have, you know, we said that we were going to, um, get, um, get more public input and, um, and, and socialize this with the communities, um, to a greater extent. Um, but the, the basic proposal isn't going to change much.
Uh, so, I, I think I'm hearing from you that you've been a little bit more comfortable if we did re-vote it to be continued.
I, I think that would be the, the appropriate thing, yes, sir.
All right, good enough. Uh, Susan, would you mind calling in for a vote?
Yeah, so, but doesn't that just talk about parking and aren't what we're doing, it's much more significant?
No, no, that's not. We took the parking out of, um, no, this is, this is the full deal, I believe.
Parking came out of the Commercial Recreation Center one, this is the full thing, so it was advertised, it was actually advertised correctly. And since we did advertise it, I think we want to continue with that in the trot.
Where's Susan?
Okay, trying to find it, hold on.
It's item two, it's a zoning text amendment to the Norfolk, the Norfolk City zoning ordinance, modify the city's short-term rental regulations, and the motion is to continue until July.
All right, that's a regular agenda, Susan.
Yeah, I think George just read it, I'll read them, I'll read your names.
All right, that's good.
Ms. Austin.
Yep.
Mr. Houchens.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Ms. Shelton.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd. Uh, Mr. Hales.
That.
I, I'm sorry, I.
Mr. Fraley.
Aye. On the record, we reflect that that was not withdrawn, it was continued.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and then the one last thing that I have, um, is to, um, note that, um, today is Mr. Houchen's last meeting as a member of the Norfolk Planning Commission. Um, and, you know, normally we would, would do something and have a get-together and whatever, but, um, obviously, the, the times and circumstances don't permit that at this point. But from the staff, uh, Houchens, we wish you, um, all the best and godspeed and, and whatever your, your future endeavors are, we hope that you work the industry.
And he's going to change his mind, George.
George, I want to, I want to thank you for the, for, for, uh, just, uh, the, the kind wishes, and it's been a pleasure serving with you all. Uh, by my recollection, um, this, this is by far the longest meeting that we've ever had in my six-year tenure. So, so I'll take a rain check on the happy hour, and I'll say we went out with a bang.
I, I was going to say, Nikita, I, I will take an IOU, IOU, I, one happy hour.
Yeah, one.
That'll work.
Yeah, face. I'll get it scheduled.
Face two, Nikita, face two, we're coming for you.
I hear you, I hear you.
You better go hide, Nikita, you could be very vulnerable. And look, best of luck to you, we appreciate you giving us your time, and wish you could stay longer, and, uh, and I know that having this long meeting is doing nothing to change your mind about that.
Not a bit.
Hey, Nikita, Nikita, you owe me a call. Just, just telling you.
Ramona, I've got a lot more time for calls now, so I'll.
Okay, folks, if there's nothing else, we stand in the journey, thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.